Okay, we're calling the Selectments Meeting to order. Open session. Public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Well, actually, we have -- why don't we go right to a couple of meetings here? Because we're moving them up anyway. Chief Galloway.
I'll go first, too. I'll be quick, too.
That's all right.
I just wanted to touch base with you briefly about animal control and animal inspector. So I don't know if you're aware, but we have two positions and two separate people. Thank you to the board a few years ago for putting the animal control officer under my direction. Love it. And, but we've been looking into it. I'm sure you're aware, about a year ago, we had a pretty significant dog issue in town that was handled.
The Zercher Hill one?
Yep. Recently, we had an animal issue where someone's animals were taken away by the state. And one of the things I'd been looking to do for a while, and I started to have some brief conversation with FinCom about the budget on it, was really what we're going to do with the animal control position, because the animal inspector is under direction of the Board of Health.
Right.
Because it's -- there's more to the position than just the traditional dog officer that we've always had. There's a certification process, and now the state requires that we have a certified animal control officer in place. You know, my background, I had a dog officer that worked for me in the past and also used contracted services. So that was one of the ideas that I was kind of throwing out there, someone that does multiple communities, but does it professionally, you know, 40 hours a week, and that's what they do. In the meantime, the town of West Boylston lost their animal control officer and was kind of in a predicament. So they reached out through CMRPC to look at potentially regionalizing some positions. So we had an initial meeting with Boylston. It's expanded a little bit. It's Boylston, West Boylston, Berlin, Shrewsbury, Westboro, and Grafton, and trying to possibly get Northboro on board as well. Northboro actually already has a outsourced animal control and animal inspector, actually the same person that used to work for me when I was in Wayland. So looking at just kind of whether or not it's feasible, and I wanted to touch base with you before. We kind of went too deep into the process, and I started attending a lot of meetings to see if it's an option. I think it's a good option. But one of the things that I would recommend if we were to do it is that we would combine animal inspection and animal control. I think economically, it would make the most sense. So I guess what I'm looking for is your feedback, and then I would meet with the Board of Health later to kind of get their feedback on the animal inspector as well.
I got one sort of threshold question.
Yeah.
Because the animal inspector is under different state law than the animal control officer.
Correct.
Whether the two of them can...
Yep. And in a lot of communities, they actually are combined.
Are they combined, or is it one person doing both jobs?
It's one person that does both jobs, covers both different statutes.
That is my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not a decision that has to be made. It's just, I mean, I will continue to attend the meetings with CMRPC and really get some more information and see, one, economically, if it's going to be feasible, and then if it's going to deliver us the service we need.
It does strike me, so that's an awfully large territory for that.
It is, but actually, we kind of talked about that before. And a lot of it came down to what facilities people already have that we could use, what assets they already have, and what would really make it economically feasible. If we didn't go large enough, it really couldn't work. But then we looked at, say, Berlin, Boylston, West Boylston, and the volume of calls and, you know, versus the other ones, and how many full-time equivalents we would need.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, yes. I mean, that's...
But, I mean, we operate with somebody now who has a full-time job. So we have to work around that schedule.
Right.
So it definitely can be done if it's planned right. But like I said, it's early. I just didn't want to invest too much time if you thought it was a bad idea from the start. So.
I think it's a good idea.
Something worth investigating.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'd also point out that one of our community compact points was regionalized services.
Right.
So I think it's good to show, even if ultimately it doesn't happen, I think it's good to show that we're working and looking at those things.
It's good to show that we're looking at it.
So, yeah.
Well, that's all.
All righty.
The Boy Scouts run race.
Um, yeah, not -- yeah. Really, not much of an issue on our end. I actually had a discussion with her today. They're looking at less probably than 100 people, so it truly shouldn't be. It should be minimal impact. And I've discussed with her what we're going to be going forward, and I'll touch base with her a few more times.
What's the route?
They're going to run from the Solomon Pond Mall, Donald Lynch Boulevard, River Road, to Bridge Road, and back up to the mall.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
You, too.
I'm going to get back to homework.
There you go. All right, it's about 7:15. Do you want to come up for a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, just sorry, because we have one, and then we'll...
Do you -- I sent you out that packet, and do you want any more information or to include for the real meeting?
I don't...
I think I'm okay.
Yeah, I think I am.
That was good.
Yeah?
Okay. So we'll see you next Monday.
Next Monday. Oh, yes, and while we're here, did we...
Get it in the newspaper for Friday, so it's -- the hearing is going to be Monday, the 11th, at 7:30.
Okay.
Okay.
And we will get it in for Friday. And our understanding is that there's no minimum requirement for having it in the paper. It just has to be in the paper.
Reasonable.
Yeah. Okay.
So I don't know if you want to tell people that...
Yes. Why don't we tell people that? Because of a posting issue, we had originally scheduled to begin today the tax classification hearing. Instead, we are deferring that to next Monday at 7:30, so that we can do it with all the appropriate postings having been made. So tune in next week. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. How are you this evening?
Very well. You sound pretty good.
So I take it you guys have seen the package already that I put together?
Mm-hmm.
I did an extensive fee study pertaining to our existing building permit fees and their structure and how they're classified.
Mm-hmm.
And I did that with 12 different communities to find out, you know, rhyme or reason, who matches with what, and what's the best practice so far out there?
Mm-hmm.
And was able to come up with the new fee schedule. If you want to look at both the existing and then the new, I think we can go through it.
All right. We're ready.
So if you look at the current permit fee schedule that we have, when trying to have people come in and calculate how much they owe for a building permit fee, I've been getting the comments of, well, it's $67 per square foot. I have 1,000 square feet. That's a $67,000 permit fee, which is not the case. This is the way to figure out by cost per square foot, and then there's a factor multiplier that goes into it to figure out the permit fee. A little complicated, difficult to decipher. So what I've done is actually removed all the guesswork out of it into the new fee structure. So instead of somebody trying to calculate what constitutes for your square footage and certain floors and basements and so forth like that, we broke it down to costs per 1,000, cost of construction. In doing that, that actually makes the process more streamlined, easier for people to figure out their permit fee before they come in, and it also lends itself better to the department as far as a customer service standpoint. So there's a few fees on the new fee schedule that are new. One is solar. If you look at the existing building permit fees, solar isn't represented on there anywhere. But by code, we have to issue a building permit for solar panels to go on somebody's roof. So I put that down. That's $10 per 1,000, cost of construction, minimum of a $50 fee. All the minimums are set at $50 flat fee for your permits. And that's just basically because it covers the cost of the inspector, his time going out there, mileage, and any overhead to do the one inspection is $50. Some of the things that are in the new fee schedule that were not taken into account for were certificates of inspection for liquor license, 304s, and the 110 table, which is your common VIX. There was no fee schedule for that in the existing building department fee schedule. So I put that down as a $50 per space, cost for that inspection, which again, that reverts back to the minimum permit fee of $50 requirement. Administrative fee, that was also not represented in the current fee structure, which is a $25 flat fee for if you have a change of owner or builder, you need to replace your permit because you've lost it, or you need to update your permit, and getting occupancy certificates of anything that needs to be changed, it's an administrative fee, just to do the paperwork and get it processed. Another fee that was not in the existing permit fee schedule is the change in use fee. Change in use, sometimes when somebody comes in and takes over a business or a space, that might change the classification. So it might go from an E, educational use, to a B, business use, because it went from, you know, a different type of daycare instead of, you know, learning early ed, elementary ed, and stuff like that. So that was one that I had to add in there. And then the other new one that would be in is for a wireless communication facility. So your cell towers, things like that, they're not designated in the original building permit fee schedule, so I had to add that in. And again, that's the same thing, $10 per 1,000, cost of construction. Now, there's a few fees that I updated in the building permit fees that fire department were charging for. And if you got a chance to look at the fee study that I did, on the very back page is the memorandum that came out from the state when they took the building, I mean, the fire department fees in permitting and gave them back to the building department. So in working with the fire department on making that choice of who's going to govern what permits and so forth, we kept the same fee structure and everything into the building permit fees that the fire department has, except the fire department won't be charging those fees any longer. They'll just be charged through the building department.
Okay.
Are you missing a page?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I got that.
There it is.
So explain that to me again on the fire.
Okay, so for the fire alarm, not associated with a building permit, the sprinkler, not associated with a building permit, and suppression system, not associated with a building permit, requires separate permits just for that work to be done.
Yep.
Only new. So those fees that are in there are the exact fees that the fire department currently have.
Okay.
It's just basically, instead of going through the fire department, it goes through the building department.
Okay.
And that's per the memorandum that came out from the state.
Okay.
A couple of years ago.
Okay.
And are there any fire department fees that are not going to be charged under this current arrangement?
Everything else stays the same. It's only the two, basically, all that's happening is he's going to permit them, except, and we're not. So the revenue's still going to come into the town.
Right.
It's just going to go in through the building department.
And everything that you would have charged, he's going to charge.
Yep.
Correct.
Exact same fee. Yep.
But we both still have to review the plans and do the inspections.
Right. Yep.
Okay. So when someone needs a fire smoke alarm inspection, when they buy a house, they call, still call the fire department.
Right. The only thing this pertains to is brand-new construction.
Okay.
Everything else, if it's a renovation or remodel, it actually comes back to us again, which doesn't make any sense. You would think if they're going to take one part of it away, they would take it all away. It, all of this just pertains to all brand-new construction.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a sprinkler system already in a building, and they need to make an alteration, move some heads and things like that, then they would go to the fire department and ask for...
If all you're doing is changing it back.
Yeah.
But you said a remodeling, which of course would require a building permit, and the way I'm hearing this is that would come to you still.
Right. Yep.
Anytime there's a building permit.
Yeah.
So the only time would be if they were purely changing the fire system, that it wouldn't come to you. Is that right?
So if there's an existing fire alarm system in the building.
Yep.
And they need to make changes to that fire alarm system for whatever reason.
Right.
They would go to the fire department.
Right. If not associated with any building modification of the building.
Right. Correct.
But if it was a remodeling that required a building permit.
Permit.
It would go to you.
Correct.
Okay. That's fine.
Some of the other things that were in there, and I didn't see in the existing, or like the fence permit, fences, the new code that's coming out is the ninth edition, which is going to take effect in probably the end of this week. With doing that, it allows you to build a fence up to seven feet in height without a permit. Once you go over seven feet, it requires a permit. So what I did is I made an adjustment and put that fee, what that fee would be, in here, which is a base fee of $50 plus $5 per linear foot of fence. So...
And that applies only to fences above that height?
Above seven feet. Yep. Yeah. Until then, somebody can build a fence seven feet high, and they don't need a permit.
Okay.
Now, there used to be that you could build a shed under certain number of square feet. And that's not true any longer?
No, it is.
The new?
So I actually have here, if you look on the new permit fee schedules, is...
120 square feet.
Yeah. Shed. If it's greater than 120 square feet, then it's a $50 fee, flat fee.
The fiscal impact to it, of moving from this...
So moving, it's pretty much a wash.
And how do you document that?
So going through the permit fees that I did here and putting the multiplier to it, comes out at, see, the way they have this set up here is $10 per 1,000, actual cost of construction. But in doing that, you have to calculate how much the construction's going to be worth first. So that's where that multiplier comes in. You take $67 per square foot, you figure out that you have 1,000 square feet, so now the cost of the building is supposed to be around $67,000 to build it. Then you apply that $10 per 1,000, cost of construction, which is your multiplier, and it comes out to $670.
You don't know how many of my neighbors thought, "I might get in a permit if it's $67,000."
Right.
I need to assure them, no!
Yeah. Yeah, so that's where, you know, I was kind of scratching my head a little, too.
So the $67 per square foot is really a fixed building cost figure? Is that what it is?
Well...
Is that how it functions?
Yeah. Yes and no.
Okay.
So these numbers are out of date. These were taken out of the, the ICC comes out with evaluations, and how much for your region, cost per square foot is.
Okay.
Back in 2007, when these were originally decided upon, it was at 67. Right now, it's like $110 a square foot for construction.
Okay. So the formula is the same, except that instead of using this fixed figure...
Mm-hmm. It just shortens down to the $10 per 1,000.
And then it's the actual cost of construction.
Yes.
And how do you know the actual cost of construction? How's that documented?
When they apply for building permit, they give me a signed contract that they, and the owner, signed, and that usually has the breakdown.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so basically, what we're doing is we're taking a fixed cost of 67.
Yeah.
And we're applying the same calculation to an actual cost of construction.
Right.
Okay. Thanks. Yes, because I'm looking at, I didn't know how that came out as a wash, but that makes good sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
No, that's pretty much it. Unless anybody has any specific questions that I can answer?
No. What I would, I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea. I would like to defer voting on this until next Monday, because we did, and, you know, I want maybe us to get out of here, and you to get out of here tonight.
Sure.
But it is agenda for 8:40, and I don't know if somebody shows up at 8:40 or whatever. I would want them to be able to have a hearing on it.
Sure.
But, you know, we can, does anybody have any other questions, and how do people feel about it?
I compliment you for making it more user-friendly, the website.
Thank you.
Because I do know there's a lot of people who couldn't understand it before.
Yeah.
And I guess the one comment I would have is maybe a schedule to revisit these every so many years or something, rather than, because it seemed like it had been a while since they've been revisited. So maybe I...
My recommendation is usually every five to 10 years. Reason because it's the ebb and flow of construction. So you're going to have peak moments through five years, and you're going to have lulls through five years. So if you average it out between five and 10 years, it's a good time to come back and go through these on a periodic basis.
And of course, you cured one of the most compelling reasons to look at it more often than less often, which is your construction costs will escalate automatically.
Right.
I do take that as...
Yeah.
Yeah. It just seemed like there were a lot of things that hadn't initially been addressed.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree. I agree. I agree. Well, I'm certainly, you know, favorably disposed.
I am, too.
Yeah.
I would say this, that, you know, I mean, I think you get the sense of where we are. I'd like to delay the actual vote until next Monday. I don't think you necessarily need to come in, unless for, you know, we get like a crowd of people in at 8:40 after you leave and have a lot of other comments, and then in that case, we'll let you know, and we'll have further discussion next week.
Okay. Fantastic.
Fair enough.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good.
All righty.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we can go to minutes. There are open session for August 21st, August 23rd, which was a meeting with the FinCom, and August 28th. Chris and Lisa were the only ones here, so I don't know if you're ready to vote, but I'd take a motion.
Take a motion to approve both minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have...
It's two sets, because they're two different weeks. So she submitted one last week.
Oh, yeah, no, that's right. I just look at them to see that there isn't one of our names on it, or something like that. That's all. Because then we have to...
I don't think so.
No. No, but you never know. You know, so that's actually, that's the only reason, that's the only reason I usually look at these. So indeed, we have a motor vehicle fiscal year '17 refund to a number of people in the amount of $962.81. Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have another motor vehicle 15, 17, rather, refund, this is in the amount of $775.31.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we have a reimbursement for the best practices workshop, is that right?
Yep.
To Lisa, so this should be just you and I who are voting on it. It's the amount of...
Signs, or not?
No, this is the motor vehicle. Yeah, sorry. Already answered. Yeah. So this is reimbursement in the amount of $25.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show that Lisa was abstaining. Okay. Oh, no. That's just me?
Okay.
All right, the next item is to approve the Boy Scouts of America run, and as they just indicated, it's a loop that, you know, really just sort of loops through Rowland and River Road and back to the, that is on October 14th. We heard from Chief.
Yep.
He doesn't have a problem. So motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is the appointment of Eloise Salz as the Berlin representative to the CMRPC Regional Affordable Housing Trust Exploration Committee, term to expire May 31st, 2018. May I have a motion on this?
Motion to appoint Eloise as the representative.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
As I understand it, this is, this is the idea of, you know, providing some kind of regional trust that would receive contributions and funding to support affordable housing in more meaningful ways than is really sometimes under 40B, so. And again, I think this is another thing we did, the Community Compact, which talked about regionalization, and this is another, you know, data point in terms of, you know, looking at regionalization of efforts and facilities, so. Is there nothing else?
Glad she, glad she would like to appoint him.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I talked to Jim about it, so I kind of got the scoop there.
Good. All right, well, sometimes I say it just for the home audience, so that they know what we're...
What we're doing.
What we're doing.
Yep.
Okay. No other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right. The next one is the bill in the amount of $17,343.44, which is to provide three-phase electrical service to the Old Town Hall. This was, you know, a...
And apparently, it wasn't in the budget.
No, no, it wasn't in the budget.
Right.
And it's to provide electrical service to, you know, the entire building. So I did talk to Keith, because I knew they had done something like this up at the Town Barn, and that amount was either 1,500 or 1,700 he sent me the, and he paid that out of his own budget. His involved simply taking out one transformer and putting in three so that they had the three-phase power. This indicates that it will require to replace two poles and install an anchor system, moving one transformer and installing three transformers. So it does involve, you know, more work, but they had said to us at first that it didn't require a new pole, so.
That was my next question.
Yep. I mean, I think before we jump in and agree to pay this, I think we need to have some conversations with National Grid because this was way more than we expected.
And my understanding from Keith was the poles are about five grand apiece when he, they looked at it before, so that's where the...
Yeah, no, I mean, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So, and I think also, you know, I'd like to investigate whether, you know, whether this can be amortized and added to, you know, the town's electric bill or, I mean, I think we need to look at a number of things before we make a commitment on this.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay. Alright, then while we're on that subject, at the meeting last Wednesday, the Town Hall meeting, the contractor said that they had come up with a way to install the elevator without having to wait for the installation of this service. And that would involve bringing in a three-phase generator for the process of, for the time in which they're installing it. The cost of that is about 1,100 a week. They think they can do it in a week, or at worst, two weeks. The sort of absolute worst, worst case, if it were a month, the cost would be $3,500. I indicated to them that, you know, we needed to, we needed to talk about that. The advantage of that is that the elevator can be installed, the building can get its building permit, the contractor seemed to say that it was very likely that it would get its building permit, you know, on the contractual date, you know, right around November 1st. And then the, the only thing that would be, the case is that the elevator itself obviously couldn't be used until the three-phase power were, was connected. At the time, the three-phase power is connected, the fellow who installs the elevator will have to come back and do sort of, you know, almost a service visit level, you know, adjustment, synchronization, et cetera, of the elevator, and when that is done, to schedule an elevator So, and, and in order to get that in, we really sort of need to make a decision on whether we're going to okay the, the generator.
Is there...
I was gonna ask...
It's such, it's like an unknown, there's so many unknowns, the dates.
Yes, I guess I was gonna ask, what is it costing us to keep the building closed right now? Because my guess is it's almost a wash if you look at having it, and how long would it be closed extra?
Right.
My guess is that you're, you're either a wash or you're coming out better if you get the building opened faster.
Certainly if, certainly if, we were talking about it, and it is quite unknown because, you see, we, they say in this National Grid that it would be four to six weeks is necessary for construction, I'm just reading, okay?
Christmas.
And then upon receipt of payments, permits, right-of-way, and the signed proposal, the project will be added to National Grid's construction schedule, okay? If any, you know what that means?
Yeah.
That means it's gonna take a long time and they're not telling us how long it will take us, you know, so. I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that this could delay the opening of the building past the first of the year and, you know, into next year.
I think that's optimistic.
Yeah.
That's really optimistic.
Yeah. So therefore...
Do they really bring in that much money so that it's worthwhile to do this?
Well, we're paying Leam, yeah, I mean, they do...
All the yoga and all that goes through their, their dance classes and, I mean, we could get the numbers, but they do bring in income when they're open, but they're not bringing in now.
I mean, I think certainly, if you're talking about delaying of four, five, six months, it's going to offset the 3,000. If even it was, if it was on the short end of it, it would offset the 1,000 or, you know, or 2,000, or 2,500 for two weeks, you know?
So even if we did the generator, we would, we could get that part done with the generator.
Right.
And then they could use the building, but the only thing that wouldn't work would be the elevator.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if they, everything else would be done, they said they would do it.
Lights would be on, then...
No, absolutely, everything could be done. They, they could do an occupancy permit, Joe was there, and the fire department was there and all, you know, listen to this. So yes, we can get it up and running, the only thing that we're then be waiting for is the elevator. And I think particularly given the fact that I think we want to take some time, and again, I think, you know, if we're going back and forth with them, it's gonna be a couple of weeks before, if you go back and forth on something like this, before you're even to beginning.
Well, we could get the initial part done with the generator.
Yes.
But we don't need to keep it for weeks, do we?
No, no, they only need it during the time of installation, that's it.
Yeah.
And they'll take it out.
And they think, I think they were, you know, trying to give us a worst case, you know, that a month was 3,500, they felt that if they pushed it, they could get it done for a week, in a week, it might be two weeks, so. I mean, my feeling is that the likelihood is probably 1,100, 1,200, maybe twice that amount because they have to go into a second week. They did say that they would, you know, try to schedule it carefully and, you know, not have it sitting there unused and all of that, so. I mean, I think, I think that, you know, I think it is something that's worth, worth doing.
This is from Amelia.
Because otherwise, you know...
If we can't negotiate the cost of the surcharge, then I guess we figure out where all of the money's coming from.
Right.
This is actually very helpful, that Mary just printed it out.
Oh yes.
So, yeah, it would cover...
Right.
Pretty handily if it's even close for an extra month, you're looking at, especially these months, because you're looking at 1,500 and 1,400 dollars for November and December.
They're big months for them.
And that it's...
They just wouldn't be able to have the grand opening of the, with the elevator until...
No, that's right.
Right.
Yep, yep.
But yeah, especially with the months coming up.
Yep.
You're gonna cover the, the cost of the generator.
Okay.
If you wanna see.
Thanks, Mary. So, and again, you know, my, my experience with building projects is if you get off schedule, you end up going over budget, I mean, it's just, you know, it just...
And my concern with end...
Never mind anything else, what they said was, we are on budget, there's nothing, you know, but if we end up, you know, having to delay, having to have somebody leave, come back, they, that can be a change order, you know?
Yep.
And that can cost us as well, so.
So are you, are you willing to do the phone call to National Grid?
Yes, I am, I am. And, and also talk to our municipal, you know, representative. I mean, you know, I have a number, certainly a number of questions, that before this went to engineering, we were told that they didn't require new poles, you know, so I mean, I wanna talk about that, and if, anyway. So, anyway, but first a motion on, you know, authorizing the, the thing, and with the, I think with the direction to them to really, really, really try to keep that to two weeks maximum.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, obviously as little as possible, but two weeks maximum, so.
Are they still thinking of September 18th, or are they, have they pushed that out as far as...
What do you mean?
I think there was something that was supposed to happen on September 18th.
Yes, that was installation stuff, and they can do that.
And they're still planning on that.
There, if, if they have the power, they can do that on schedule, so.
Great.
Yes. Alright, so a motion to that effect that we, you know, authorize the...
Make the motion, Tom.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. The motion would be to authorize procuring the three-phase generator for purposes of installing the elevator with the direction to keep the cost to a minimum, and if at all possible, below two weeks, okay?
So moved.
Alright. Alright, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, and then the next thing is the ACG contract, which I'm gonna suggest that we, this is the, this is the...
Is this the final payment?
Yeah.
Or final invoice, yeah.
This would be the final one.
This is on the clerk of the works.
Right.
Yep. I have seen precious little work product from these people.
They sent all the weekly reports at the end in a flurry.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, can you resend those to me? Because I had a lot of emails when I was out on vacation, I think those came in then. I wanna look at those because, first of all, I, I'm very disinclined, want to pay them any more than the contractual amount they ran over, and I could talk to them about that. But I would also like to review the work product because, you know, I mean, I didn't attend every construction meeting, but I think I was at two-thirds or three-quarters of them, and I didn't see, I really didn't see a lot of value there.
No.
Nothing.
They reported they sent those weekly reports to the architect but not to the owner.
Okay, well, I need to...
Send the view back to the doctor.
Yeah, and I'll try to talk to Tom as well after the meeting tomorrow, okay? So I think we'll defer this 6,800 payment until we, okay?
Next week or just do you wanna hold on to it for longer?
Why don't we defer it until we, I say to put it on the agenda again, because if I, I suspect next week will be too little time, because if I talk to them, talk to people on Wednesday and get the stuff and look at it, I'd have to talk to them, you know, Thursday or Friday and get a resolution by Monday, so I doubt that that's, I mean, I can certainly put our case before them, and I may wanna come back Monday and say, hey, I've looked at this and I wanna suggest an approach, you know?
Yeah.
So, alright. Okay, then, following joint meeting with FinCom, we, Chris asked for an agenda item to follow up the discussion on tracking the finances for the 1870 Town Hall. I think we've done, in the interim, obviously, you know, people have put together charts and everything, and I think the key part here is that we really have to focus on is what's going against that 40,000 contingency.
Okay.
I did ask them if everything else was on budget, or there were any expectations of, of anything popping up. At this point, they said no, at this, you know, when I, when I met with them last Wednesday.
Is there, is there anything that they could perhaps do differently that would save some money? Is there anything like that, perhaps? You know, sometimes, you know, you're putting in a kitchen and, you know, something costs too much, so you have to cut somewhere else. That's why, I, I, there probably isn't, but...
No, we didn't...
With this sort of project, there's...
Yeah, and we didn't discuss, we did discuss in considerable detail what was going against the 40.
Right.
And where we were as a result of that discussion, and then further emails and so on, I think we now have a, you know, have a pretty good pin through what, what we've spent, how much of the 40, and, I mean, we would be doing splendidly if we had not done the clerk of the works, I have to say, you know, we would, we, that was not something that anybody had the bright idea about when we were putting the program together, and it came out after the bid was accepted, and so we put it against that 40. As a result, we're quite tight. I, what I was, what I was suggesting, I, now that I have a number of, you know, the, the figures, I think, you know, a couple of things that struck me was, one, maybe get together, and apologies if somebody sent this, but I have been, I was away for, the, get a list of the open items, open special articles.
Yeah, we had talked about that at the finance meetings.
I think June is, I think she's on top of it.
Yeah, so we need to get that list. So what I'd like, I'd like to do is, I think next, I think at this point, we do have a list of all the expenditures now. We can add at least an estimate for the generator because we have now added that. Then I think if we, if we get a list of the open articles to see what may be available there, because I know at least one of the articles that still, I thought had some money in it was for handicap access, so, you know, I mean, and that was used actually for first-floor access and putting in the closed-circuit television so you could see, you know, I mean, a few things like that, but I, I think that that's perfect, that's perfectly bona fide to spend that during this project, because that's what this is all about, and look at, you know, look at the other things to see what we can, what we can do with that.
Did June say that she had already paid something out of one of the articles?
I thought I had heard that.
I think so, yeah.
Do you have told me that? I haven't talked to June about it.
Yeah.
One of the architects' last invoice was being paid for out of handicapped access.
Okay, okay.
Those approved at last week's meeting.
So we should look at that. I think the next thing we need to do is see where we are in terms of the municipal expenses budget, because again, I think that's one of the things we need to look at, you know? So I think if we could get those pieces together next week, maybe we can sit here, you know, during a meeting and make a little longer range plans and release some next steps.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the best scenario, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, if we had, did not have the clerk of the works even paying the, this amount for the electricity, you know, service, we would, we would be under that, so.
So I did see the email, I think, back and forth about the curatorial slab.
Yes.
So can you elaborate on that?
You probably should.
Yes, absolutely. The, and I do need, that, thank you, I need to look at the RFP, that's the one piece I need to see. I was confused because the footings and foundation, which to my, you know, layman's judgment meant, you know, what you put the damn building on without anything else, the, was, was for a bit taken out of the project with a change order that was then voided. And then there was a change order that put the footings and foundation, I thought, back in, but that was putting not the footing and foundations, which was basically reversing the old order, so that should have had no impact on the cost of the project. But as it develops, the contract, and I did look at the contract, the contract did not include the pouring of... include the pouring of the slab, which is different from footings and foundation and that, I certainly missed that.
I think slab is foundation, but I guess I'm wrong.
So I do want to look at the, the RFP, but I, but the stuff that was sent me in those emails from the contract was pretty clear. And so therefore, that, because I think between the RFP, and I have to run this from the ground, the, between the RFP and the contract, there were discussions purportedly about ACV being able to pour the slab. But they can't.
Right.
And so we put it back in. So anyway, there was a good deal of confusion, an ongoing confusion about that, but I think we've now gotten to the bottom of that. I do have to look at the, at the RFP. And frankly, I may try to do a bit of a Blanche Dubois on that and appeal to the kindness of strangers and see if we can get some adjustment on that, you know, maybe, you know, splitting it or something like that, but I could talk to them about that. But I want to see the RFP. Did I, my understanding was somebody at FinCom had said that if the RFP said one thing and the contract said another, that the RFP might control, did I?
I don't think so.
Hear that?
Buzz said that.
Huh?
Buzz said not to pay for anything that wasn't included, you know, whatever the RFP said, he thought should control whatever they put a bid in on.
Well, I'd like to look at the RFP, but.
Are you still at the contract, I think?
Yeah, obviously.
Final word on things.
Yeah, I, I will like, I will look at the RFP and see if we have any arguments, but generally speaking, unless an RFP is written in a very particular way and unless the contract incorporates, you know, the RFP, if the contract modifies it, I mean, there's tons of times that things are modified between an RFP and a contract.
Right.
But, you know, we may have some arguments in that regard that could, you know, allow us to at least split things, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we're going to do some negotiating then.
Yep, so anyway, that's, that's where we are with that, we know that. Good evening. You here for?
I'm inspected. There were so many things on the agenda that kind of touched River Bridge, I thought I'd hang out.
Oh, yeah, the poll hearings at what time?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, okay. All right, so Mary, did you get that list of things that we need to get together?
I, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'll send out a draft, you can tell me if you want.
Yeah, why don't you do that and then, because I'd love to get that stuff together so that we could then, you know, then maybe put that together into a package and we can spend 10 or 15 minutes on that at least.
Next.
Next.
Monday.
Monday, okay. We don't have, do we have any other meetings besides the tax hearing for Monday?
Actually, first at 7:15, your meeting with Regal Cinema is about their, you know, exploring whether or not they could get a full liquor license for the theater at the mall.
Okay.
That's 7:15, 7:30 is tax classification. I originally put an hour in for that this week. Do you want me to put another hour in for that next week?
I think that's wise.
Okay, and then put the 1870 discussion after that.
Oh, you just put it on the agenda, you don't have to put it at a particular time.
No, that's correct.
All I was going to say was then let's not make any other appointments.
Okay.
For that night so that we can, you know, spend some time talking about that, okay? All right. Oh, yes, one, and this reminds, this reminds me. The contractor had indicated that they wanted to be named and insured under a property, has that been done at this point?
There were volleys back and forth with our insurance company who says they may not be an additional insured, they could be named, they could be a certificate holder, but they can't be an additional insured.
And did you pass that along to them?
They've been copied on this all the time, so I kind of thought that they understood that Maya was going to go only as far as Maya was going to go, I'm not sure what else they'd want.
Okay, can you forward?
I wish they would actually say what they.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, because they, they've been talking directly, I connected everybody directly.
Okay, can you forward that to me, that thread so that, because I'm going to see them tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We're halfway through the project.
Huh?
Just looking at, like, it's kind of like, you know, horse cart, barn door thing.
Yep. Okay, and. This is a status query under the contract bond.
I don't think that's a big deal, I just.
Yeah. Okay, and it's just asking us whether the contract has been completed, if not completed, probable completion date, amounts paid to the contractor and amounts withheld as a retained percentage. Has the work progressed satisfactorily, yes, are there any unsatisfied claims of means on file, no, so, yes, I'm willing to sign this, I don't think we even need a vote on this, but.
Okay.
Okay? All right. This is, the next one is. A write-off of debts deemed uncollectible, these are the.
The selectmen voted at the last meeting to write off, there's two categories of debt.
Yep.
Things that the chief says are just not collectible, they're too old, there's no contractual way to go against them. So the selectmen wrote off everything that was a thousand and under last week because the town bylaw allows that.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a category, you know, there's still plenty left that are higher than $1,000 and June wondered if, what you want to do about that, possibly a bylaw revision because she sees a lot of towns have higher write-off authority, that thousands might be an antiquated number, so let the rest of those ride until a town meeting vote. And then there's a second category of, about standing ambulance rides primarily that are more like the 1,400 to $2,000 range, the chief is saying, these are ripe to collect and he was looking for your guidance on that. So the board deferred until you could come back.
You mean in terms of how to collect them?
Yeah, like send it to town council, a collection agency, or what do you want to?
I think the new ones are collected by whoever's handling that, but the old ones.
Yeah, there's a gap in time.
Are not under the new contractor, so there is an issue with.
Can we transfer them to the new contractor?
I don't know, he, you know, he didn't really get into it.
All right.
Oh, you.
Well, I need to talk to Chief Z about a couple of things now that I'm back at town, so let me try to talk to Chief Z about this as well.
Hold till we hear from you?
Yeah.
Okay.
There are, I mean, things that. Things that are more. I notice, I note here that they're talking about things that are more than 10 years old.
Yeah, those are the, those are the non-collectibles period.
Right. And why did you determine 10 years?
He, that's in his opinion, that was how long that they would be not collectible.
All right, let me check that.
That was a magic number, he said.
He said the 10 years, hmm? Yeah, it might be a specific law, because the general contract claim is six years, so I was wondering whether.
Anything.
Anything, the six years and older might be, but I'll, let me ask him where that, there may be some specific law on this, you know, municipal collections or something like that.
I thought he said they were a decade old, but.
Yeah, no, he says they're 10 years or more old. What I'm saying is.
Oh, I understand.
A general contract claim would be six years and I just don't know if there's some special law that applies to municipal claims, so we'll see what, where he got that 10 years. But my feeling would be that if we determine that it's the general six-year thing, then we should actually, you know, write off everything that's six years or older, so we'll find out why he said it was 10 years.
Has Berlin ever used a collection agency or anything?
Somebody say yes, you said yes.
The board had considered whether to use someone from town.
Yeah, we did use somebody from town a long, you know, a while ago, but I don't think we've ever actually sent them to a collection agency who sold them for a discount, we know, I know we've never sold them for a discount.
The concern was whether or not in the aggregate, it would tip the need to actually put on a request for proposals because if they collected, I don't know, with something like $160,000, if they collected. You know, all of it or a good portion of it, would they be over?
Yeah, or we would have to sell.
Yeah, and that's kind of what fell off the rails before.
The claims, or we would have to sell the claims to a collection agency. What I was speaking about before was that we did have somebody who came in under Danny and actually did collections as part of their job, but that was the town collecting them, that wasn't, and that person was just paid an hourly sum for their.
Okay.
Activity, so. All right. Okay, next is. The plumbing and gas inspector pay, roll payment schedule. So this is 95% of the fees collected. The projected permit fee will be 39 plus or minus. The total monthly payment paid within 14 days of the end of the month cannot exceed the lesser of $2,000 or 95% of the collected fees less alternate fees. Okay, does anybody, does everybody understand this?
I do.
Okay.
I think I do.
All right.
I, and I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I didn't really have a problem with it.
You understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I talked to Joe earlier today.
Okay.
I did too.
Because when I read this, I, I don't, but.
I think she's in order to hold back some money in case they have someone go in instead of the inspector and they have to pay that person, if the money is all paid out, then they wouldn't be able to pay.
What does alternate fees mean here?
An alternate inspector.
Okay.
It may be, maybe the wording isn't clear, but.
If one of them retired somewhere in this period of time or.
Okay. So we pay on a monthly basis over 10 months. The way I'm reading this is we pay it over.
Yeah, we figured the duration of the project would be about 10 months.
Would be about 10 months. And the most that we pay out is $2,000 a month?
Yeah.
That's what she wants to do, and then have a lump payment at the end.
And a lump payment at the end, okay.
Which I'm assuming would be sizable given the inspection fees.
And this was acceptable to the inspectors, I take it.
It was.
Okay?
This is just the wiring, well, actually.
It's only plumbing and gas right now.
It's only plumbing and gas.
Yeah, okay. All right, then. I'm willing to take a motion to.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Is it just one?
There's two. All right. And eight fifteen is the poll hearing? Eight fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to sneak in a couple last things here then. Okay, I think this is perhaps the last chapter in the excess cable stuff, they're asking for permission to throw the stuff away. Okay, I think that they've tried to dispose of it in every other possible way and keep following them all, so, all right.
Motion to throw them away.
Second, no authority.
There you go.
I don't want to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, any further comments or questions? I suspect not. All those in favor? Aye. Thumbs down on the outdated equipment. I think we can jump in here quickly. This is an award, Northborough Oil, bid lives approximately 20,000 gallons of number two heating oil. At the fixed rate of 1.799 per gallon and oil burner and heating service at the rate of 269 per unit for annual tune-ups, service calls at 95 per hour plus parts during normal working hours and 147 50 per hour for nights and weekends for emergency repairs. This went out to bid.
He, he actually didn't put it out to bid, but he got quotes on the per gallon rates from other.
Okay, and this was the lowest per gallon rate?
It was the lowest, yeah, before he started getting into transportation from further away.
Okay. All right.
The rates are nearly identical to Northfor Oil this year, except for I think they went up $10 per unit for the service inspections.
Okay. And I mean, I have to say, it was probably good to get this bid in before the hurricane hit Texas because I suspected that may have some impact on.
Tinsley texts every time he goes up there about how much it's gone up.
Yeah, yeah. So, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think. That's for you. All right, I think we're ready to begin the poll hearing.
My name is Steve Bigley.
Come on up.
Hi. Good evening.
Tom Andrew.
Hi.
Chris Keith.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thanks, my pleasure.
Steve Bigley. I'm here to represent Verizon's interest on a poll on Whitney Road.
Mm-hmm.
It's to feed the pump station for River Bridge West home suites.
Okay.
There has been some miscommunication between Verizon and National Grid and their developer, Mr. Larry Green. I first met him in December of 2016. We talked about placement of a poll at that location. He led me to believe he was going, I don't know if you're aware of the agreement that power, the power company and the phone company have with joint ownership. Verizon has assumed responsibility for all polls in the town of Berlin. There is a little catch, if the customer does not request Verizon's service, we defer to whoever they are purchasing service from and they make it 100% poll, not, not a joint poll. That's what happened, Mr. Green couldn't give me a service order for Verizon's service, so it went back and forth with the power company.
Okay.
I have an email chain here that he told me in the email that National Grid had assumed that responsibility, they had petitioned the town for placement of the poll and they were moving forward with it, that was back in February.
Okay.
Five months go by, paperwork gets churned, apparently Verizon got wind that the customer needed the poll, they went out and placed the poll.
Okay. So this poll we're doing a hearing on is already down there?
Already in the ground.
Okay.
It's an unusual miscommunication by the two utilities.
Okay.
I assume it's where it is on the map?
It was placed where, it is here, and the highway department had no difficulty issue with that?
No issues, no.
Okay. Okay.
This is for phase one, I imagine phase two is across River Road. I'm not sure when that is going to be.
I don't know myself, do you have any?
No, I'll defer to waterman design.
Okay. All right, so this is only for this poll?
Yes.
And only for the poll that's placed? And.
There is an anchor behind the poll to support the service.
Okay.
That is in place as well.
Okay. And. This is on Whitney Road as one is going out toward Northborough on the left. On the left-hand side is the new poll across the street from the existing poll at 11 Whitney Road.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I was by there the other day, and there still isn't any power service from that poll to the pump station.
Okay.
But everything's there.
But everything's there, the poll is ready in there to be mounted. All right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I would accept a motion to approve the location of the new poll as presented on the plans for this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
I was not here when this all took place, so I'm a little...
Nothing has taken place before this, you're...
Okay, so this has been going on since February?
Not here.
Not here.
Out there.
Okay.
Out there and among the parties, but nothing before the board.
Okay, so this is just...
You...
There's a poll there that we need to retroactively approve?
You didn't even miss the beginning credits of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. It just sounded like there was a lot of...
There was a lot of stuff, but it didn't have anything to do with us.
Going on with it, nothing with us, okay.
We're later to the party than we usually are with this, but...
Okay, got it.
Maybe we can get Verizon to put a couple of polls...
So we're really just...
I'm good.
Yes, I was thinking, if we have Verizon service to the Old Town Hall, do you put in polls there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe you need to talk...
I love it when a plan comes together, maybe. All right. Anyway, so any further comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none. We'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And vote to close the hearing?
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sign those, I can have them on the...
Yes, please. Okay. You got a...yeah, you got a couple signatures there.
All the selectmen on the next page.
Okay.
I can date it, but...
Okay.
And that next red tab, Lisa, that's at that level, I think is another clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, your sign is a selectman there.
That's town clerk, so, okay, so here, oh here?
And...
No, that's just two-sided.
Okay, there's a signature thing both places.
Yeah.
So what do we sign?
No, that's just two-sided. I just made it so I can get through the scanner, if you want to sign right there.
Okay.
Did he say Verizon was responsible for all of them?
All of these jointly used polls?
Maybe you could have gotten to fix the ones that are broken.
I don't know.
A lot of towns try that, but doesn't really get them.
There's a lot of red tape to that.
Anyway, but... All righty.
All the upper red tabs.
Yep.
It's a lot to a poll hearing, huh?
Yep. Especially one that's already installed, huh?
It's already there.
Guys, I didn't know it was installed.
No, no, we understand. These things happen.
I'm so upset and I'm embarrassed.
No, no.
Oh, jeez.
No, I mean fortunately, this is a relatively minor thing, you know?
It is, it is, but it never should have happened, I'm watching.
You're signing...
I wasn't sure if he was...
Here.
I wasn't sure if he was upset that somebody had put the poll in when he was supposed to, or what was, yeah, was going on.
We need to feed down to Town Hall. Maybe we can get him to go put them up there.
Yeah, I think...
What he needed, so...
I think he felt like National Grid should have put up the poll, but that Verizon ended up putting it up, and then Verizon thought that the poll had been authorized, that's what I was understanding, so. And so he was a little bit, I think he was a little bit chagrined, you know, that he had to come in and do it.
Okay.
Anyway.
I think he was too.
Hmm?
I think he was too.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I got three signatures.
That's it, yeah, just sign three times, you're good.
Okay.
All right. The next is a letter of support to Secretary Jay Ash for the 495 Metro West partnership.
I didn't put that on the agenda, but I don't think that's a lot of heavy lifting you've done that.
No.
Right.
It was at one point.
It was. Something got blown away about my agenda, I don't know what happened, so I...
That's okay. This is just...
Yeah, it was on there.
This is the annual...
Yeah.
Letter in support.
Letter in support of Metro West 495.
That's right.
So, motion to...
Issue the letter of support, right?
Yep.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also received a note from the Conservation Commission recommending the exercise of the town's opportunity to purchase the $1,000...the...
$1.
$1. Purchase for parcel B at River Bridge. I think personally, I think we need to file this, it's sort of duly noted, we have an option out there. Planning Board has, you know, ideas about this, I've talked to Tim about it. Currently, there's nothing that compels us to do that, we certainly won't let that option run in the interim. These guys are paying taxes on it and so on, and the...and the other thing is that it does give us leverage, you know, on development. There may develop something that we felt as a town was, you know, unattractive use or whatever, and, you know, we could renegotiate, you know, this right for participation in it. Obviously, once the town buys it, things become a lot more complicated because you have to go through municipal process, et cetera, you know, try to convert it to a use. So, there are a number of moving parts there, including an identification of new wetlands on the property. We received a note from the Cennys indicating that they might be interested or, you know, be willing to talk to us about fiddling around with the lot lines or whatever in light of the fact that the new, the new wetlands, which are at least partly on this property, change the economics of it, they've been willing to work with us. So I think, you know, on this one, we certainly are not going to let that option run, but right now, we're being paid taxes on it, and having it out there leaves certain opportunities out there for us for either renegotiation of the parcels or for favorable development and, you know, trading this right for, you know, something else, you know, in a particular context are available. So that's why, you know, we have not...
I'm just curious why Conservation came forward with this now? Why are they recommending this?
Well...
I have no background or context.
They did state something in their letter about how we may know more information than they do, but they just wanted to bring it forward.
Okay.
It says it abuts land, you know, it points out the fact it abuts land that is subject to a conservation restriction, it provides...
But nothing, none of that's changed?
No, none of that has changed.
So I was just wondering why we want now?
I don't know.
Okay.
Do you think we need to have a conversation with them or send a response to the letter? Taking it under advisement?
I mean, I could call Carolyn if you wanted and talk to her, see if she wants anything. I mean, I think they were saying, we're not trying to force your hand.
Right.
We're really just trying to say that this is of some conservation interest, you know? I mean, I can call Carolyn if you like and talk to her about what I just said.
I'm actually getting together with her on the tents too.
Oh, then you can talk to her, that's great. But that's, you know, that's really it, you know, right now, the right's there, taxes being paid on the property, it keeps a number of options and possibilities open that would be not open or, you know, much more difficult to react to if we actually exercised it and All right. Molly Reed has asked for Town Council review of the size of the abutters list required for Conservation Commission notice of intent. Yeah, I mean, I think this is fine, they can go to cops on this, right?
Yep.
No other problem.
It was very confusing when she explained it, the difference.
Yeah.
It was very confusing.
Yeah, and I mean, my understanding was actually different than that. Mine is sort of what the assessors office form said, but were they 300-foot abutters? So we ought to just ask them, yeah.
It's sort of all over the place.
And Mary put in something here that says 100 feet, but even if not physically abutting, yeah, so we ought to ask them. Okay? Which reminds me, Mary Porter had asked whether she could put a question to Town Council, which I think should not take very long, that whether the...there's a state law that limits the liability of property owners if you allow somebody on your property for passive recreational purposes, and she had a question and wanted to confirm whether that applied to minors or just to adults. And my, I mean, my understanding is it would apply to anybody because it's a state statute, it doesn't, it's not based upon contract or anything, but there were some abutters that, you know, really wanted to pin that down, and so my feeling is she could ask that question. I can go back with her and actually help to shape the question so we can keep it cheap, but I think the answer to this is because it's statutory, it doesn't rely on contract, it doesn't matter whether it's a minor or whatever, but, so, I'd ask permission to have her go, and what I will do is when I respond to her email saying that we have given her permission, I will frame the question along the lines of what I just said.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay, then we have, this is a request from Mary regarding the Highway Department notice of intent. Mary?
Just, it kind of dates back to the Walter days, Tom, where there's requests that come through this office to assist the Conservation Commission. In this case, it was kind of more indirectly, not a direct request of the Conservation Commission, but Keith needed help getting a notice of intent out in the newspaper, and the more he talked about it, it looked like he also needed help getting it to the abutters. They went ahead and did it the way that they thought they needed to do it in the end, but the idea in the past was to create the inspector land use clerk to be...
Right.
Right.
I actually think this one is a little bit of a gray area because in this case, it was the town and the Highway Department who was the interested party to file, so it was more of a Highway Department issue...
It was.
Than a Concom issue.
It was, but it highlights that there's a lot of miscommunication to the applicant as to what you're supposed to do when you are appearing before a town board. In this case, the applicant was told to draft his own notice, which isn't really how it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Applicant was told different information on how large an abutters list you needed to get.
Right, and we will deal with that.
Also, whether he needed to send it certified mail return receipt requested or just first-class mail with the stamp, because usually when the town's doing it, you don't need to, so he incurred $80 worth of expense on sending out perhaps too large a list of abutters. It's just, it's a whole bunch of issues that gets to how they're administering themselves, and just more on that, that sometimes you can use the clerk who might get up to speed on all these issues instead of putting it on an applicant to guess and get it right.
So what you're saying is that it would probably be advisable for the Conservation Commission to have a notice of intent package that would have these things?
Well, they do have one on their website that suggests a 500-foot abutters list.
Okay. Does that include a model hearing notice?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so what, again, what I'm saying here is I think perhaps we need to talk with them about putting something on that is a comprehensive...first of all, the abutters will go to council, we'll sort that out, and it will be whatever...
Well, also on the website, it still directs applicants to contact in several different places the Selectment Secretary.
Right, then that needs to be corrected.
But they would contact them, the chairman of the Conservation Commission or whatever the Conservation Commission wishes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I think we're looking at the website too, so I think everything is sort of going to get revisited on there.
I've never heard of it before, that'd be good.
Yeah, well, I talked with Garth and the process of the facelift and going through and figuring out a way to revisit the information more regularly so that it remains up to date.
Usually the way that the website, the webpages get updated right now is that a board or commission is expected to just check over their content themselves.
Right.
But generally, it comes to me because people don't know how to get ahold of Garth or they don't even give a blurb to give to Garth, they just ask for some update to be made, so I end up kind of slapping them to make sense.
But we don't really want everybody probably inundating Garth either, it's good to have a single point of view.
What I would say, yeah, what I would suggest is this, that when we get the confirmation on the abutters list, maybe one of us should make an appointment just to go to Conservation Commission, talk to them about updating the website, talk to them about having a model hearing notice and abutters letter because these things are, you know, pretty common.
Yeah.
If they need to, if they need help from Town Council or need help from us looking at it or whatever, but, you know, I think once we get the abutters, then one of us maybe would like to do that if you're...
Happy to do that, yeah, because I had questions about everything, I wanted the backstory from the other end of it, so...
And then let's see if we can put together a package for them, and then put that package on the website.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Can we also encourage them that if they need help, they should call Leanne?
I think on this one, on this one, the issue is not that.
In general.
Are others, then Keith coming to you?
Yeah, for the four years I've been here.
I mean recently.
No, it's not, it's not an everyday thing, but when it happens, it's spectacular.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know Joe is already talking about requesting more hours for her, so I think that would be something we need to look at more closely.
Sure.
Because he thinks her workload with him too is probably more than...
It was.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, and we can talk to Concom about that. Again, I think if we put something on the website, we can decide, talk about who the contact is, et cetera. In this case...
Yeah, and we are offering the job to one of the finalists, M. Ross Klun is his name. And I'm hoping that he'll be a good addition to the Devens.
Excellent.
I looked at his resume. He looks really awesomely qualified.
There were two that were above the rest and then I think they, the correct one was chosen, in my opinion.
Excellent.
So...
Excellent.
Yeah.
You have anything for us?
I wasn't overstaying my welcome. I hope I was waiting to see about new fees from the building inspector.
Oh.
That was on the agenda.
He was earlier, yeah.
Oh, he got moved up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll find out later. I just wanted to...
You can forward him a package.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can forward it.
You can forward it to me. It's not the end of the world. It wouldn't have brought me here by itself. There were just six items that touched River Bridge.
No, we, we got a little bit...
It was a good night to say hello.
Yeah, we...
Should I just give him this page?
Yeah.
I can have an extra of the whole packet if you want.
Or, I mean, he can have the whole packet.
I don't even know if it affects whoever. I just kind of saw it there and said I might as well get up to speed.
Mm-hmm.
As long as I wanted to meet the old guy.
My little doodles on there.
There were the reasons for me to be here tonight.
The doodles point out the new stuff, so...
The doodles, okay.
Yeah, my, my little...
But the new stuff, I don't think affects you very much.
If I have any questions, I'll ask my friend Mary.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, if you, if you do, yeah, if you do have any questions or comments, let us know.
Very, very good.
We haven't actually approved those yet because we had moved up the hearing, so...
We wanted to see if anybody came in at age 40 with any comments or questions.
The state would have it. Who knew I'd show?
The crowd of one.
So if you do have questions, you need to let us know.
Yes, why don't you do that? If you do have questions or concerns, let Mary know because we will put it back on the agenda for next Monday. Okay?
Let me take, Chris is in town, so it's a good chance for me to chat with him.
Okay.
We just didn't want to make sure there was anything silly or stupid or what we thought might be silly or stupid coming down the pike, and so that's great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all very, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I'd love that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.